Good evening and welcome to tonight's Meadville Tribune Forum for the candidates for Crawford County Commissioner in the upcoming November election. We welcome you folks in the audience here at the Vernon Township Building, as well as those watching on Armstrong Cable and those listening on Cool 101.7 FM. I'm Keith Gushard. I'm one of the reporters with the Meadville Tribune, and with me is Rick Green. He's our executive editor. Now, tonight's forum is going to be the first of two that we have scheduled for the Commissioner candidates. Another question and answer forum is scheduled for Wednesday, October 23rd, in Titusville. That'll be at seven o'clock, uh, seven o'clock, rather, at Benson Memorial Library in Titusville. So if you're watching this not live and on a tape, well, many times it's going to be on Armstrong, it's going to be a bit confusing. But today is the 14th of October, and then the next one will be on October 23rd in Titusville. One thing I'd ask before we start is, if anybody's got a cellphone, please take a moment just to turn it off, just so we don't have any ringing or distractions during our forum. Thank you, folks, very much. Now, we do appreciate the candidates' willingness to appear this evening to be questioned about some of the issues facing Crawford County. With us this evening, if you're looking at the dais, is John Christopher Sauf, Daniel Hunter, Francis Weiderspan, and Eric Henry. They are the candidates on the ballot for the November election. We're going to allow each of them up to about two minutes to introduce themselves, and then we'll start questioning the candidates. Each candidate will have up to two minutes to answer the question. We drew lots ahead of time to see who will go first with the introduction, and then that'll be the opening order for our questions, and we'll alternate the questions with each candidate, and, excuse me, in terms of starting position. With that, we'll turn it over to the candidates. Mr. Sauf, you're up first. You have up to two minutes to make an opening statement.
Thank you, Keith. Good evening, everyone. Thank the Meadville Tribune, Armstrong Cable, and Cool 101 for, again, hosting and broadcasting this evening. Hello as well to everyone who's listening and watching at home. My name is Christopher Sauf, and I currently serve as one of your county commissioners. Except for a brief time after graduating from Penn State, I've been a lifelong resident of Crawford County. I formerly owned and operated a newsroom in downtown Meadville. I've represented you in local school district and city government, and I've spent my career working in the county. I'm 55 years old, have been married to my wife Lori for 28 years, and our daughter Victoria is a young professional also living and working in Crawford County. Crawford County Government is a complex and, I would say, rather convoluted corporation. The challenge is to maintain the balance between the 19 county elected officials, 650 employees, seven unions, and the 88,000 residents who call Crawford County their home, and the funds needed to maintain the services that you want, as well as the ones that we are required to provide by county code, by our state, and by our federal laws to maintain. No decision is made easily or quickly, even though it may appear that way if you happen to catch a meeting on TV every once in a while. I approach every decision with care and respect for those who are affected by it, understanding that some decisions are not popular. You elected me four years ago to do what is right for our entire county, and for that I've been both grateful and humbled. It's a responsibility that I continue to take very seriously. So I thank you for the faith and confidence you've shown in me, and I would be honored to continue to serve you for another four years. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sauf. Next up, Mr. Hunter.
Hello, everyone. I'm Dan Hunter. I grew up in Segur Town where my parents still live on Grant Street to this day. My backyard was railroad tracks in the woods where we rode bikes and figured out life. I earned my Eagle Scout Award. I graduated high school and then left the county for the first time, and I joined AmeriCorps National Advisory and Community Corps doing Habitat for Humanity and community revitalization work in the southeast region of the United States. I came back to Crawford County and started a small floral business, which I come home for 11 years and have recently sold. I'm now a renter in Meadville, an auto parts specialist, and a father of three kids, Rowan, Rea, and Grady. My last few years getting involved in what's going on in the county brought amazing community growth. As I worked alongside my neighbors, rolling our sleeves up, getting together, breaking bread, and fostering community with Thankful Thursdays, Second Saturday Night Live, Poetic Evenings, Winter Fest, Hunkin' Block Party, Countywide Easter Egg Hunt, and Countywide Trunk or Treat at the Diamond, and helped with MeadvilleCalendar.com, people started sharing their concerns with me about where they live, about how we invest in our future, and about what our local government has spent money on. I began connecting people with the things that make our county great, and it made their life a little better. There was such a catharsis enjoying it and immersing myself in the wonderful community. I found out that government isn't scary and can be forced for bringing people together. There's a million fabulous, worthwhile, and important ideas born countywide daily. Many are never voiced, some are voiced and never heard, some are heard but those that don't recognize or understand their power. These ideas lay wasted, victims of inaction. They're perfectly viable, yet no action is applied, and then they disappear. I've been there, and that's okay, but there's work to be done. It's time for something different. I am ready to serve. We must all try and keep trying to be the very best we can, and that is why you'll find, that's what you'll find with Dan Hunter as Crawford County Commissioner.
Mr. Hunter, thank you. You folks may notice I'm holding up yellow when you've got about 30 seconds to go, red when you're done, and then the timer of doom is here as well. Again, Mr. Weiderspan, you're up. You have a couple of minutes.
Okay. Hello, and thank you, ladies and gentlemen, for coming to listen and watch this forum. I'm Francis F. Weiderspan, Jr., a Republican candidate for reelection as Crawford County Commissioner. I've lived in Crawford County since I was eight years old. I grew up on a dairy farm in Sue Bend Township and graduated from Townville High School in 1972. Cheryl and I have been married for 42 years, and we live on our farm in Fairfield Township. It's been an honor to serve everyone in Crawford County for nearly eight years. I take the responsibilities of the office of Commissioner that you've entrusted me with very seriously. One reason I ran for Commissioner the first time was due to my involvement with the county commissioners, county planning, and our local elected state representatives and state senator. At that time, I was serving as chairman of the Crawford County Fair Dairy Department. I worked with the commissioners on various projects within the dairy cattle area of the fairgrounds. One thing that became very obvious to me was although there are three commissioners, I did not see much communication and direct involvement by the entire Board of Commissioners with myself, the Dairy Committee, nor mine themselves. If elected eight years ago, I was committed to make a change in how I saw the commissioners interacting as a board. Through my leadership as chairman and experience, I've helped to direct a positive change to the Board of Commissioners. We have worked together as a team, discussing issues and business of our county, before any decisions are made, always drawing on each other's thoughts and backgrounds to do what we think is best for our county. No single Commissioner dictates the actions of the Board. There are decisions that need to be made nearly every day that affect each and every life that calls Crawford County home. I've always considered how every decision affects those eyes, conferring with my other commissioners. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Henry, you're up.
Good evening. Thanks for coming tonight. I'd like to first thank everyone for pushing me through the primary and allowing me to be here tonight. My name's Eric Henry. I own the ambulance service in Meadville. I have for the last 15 years. What's important to me is I bought the ambulance service out of bankruptcy, and last year we paid it off. I have 40 hard-working employees who I listen to every day, and I give them the glory when it comes to who actually made the ambulance service work. I live in West Mead Township on Franklin Pike with my wife and two stepkids, and my adult daughter actually lives in Canidota Lake in Bloomfield Township. So the county is important to me because those children wanted to grow up here and raise a family here one day themselves. I can tell you that this job is not easy. I've learned a lot from not only these gentlemen here on the stage, but a lot of the row offices and row officials in Crawford County, but the one thing I learned today that I think you should all understand is, I spent one hour with Crawford County Care Center employees, and you know what I did for one hour? I listened. And that's what's important to employees who work for you, is you take the time to listen to what they have to say, and hopefully we can come together and come to a solution. So thanks again for coming. I look forward to answering some more questions.
Thank you very much. We'll begin the questioning, and we'll go in the same order for the first question. We begin with Mr. Sauf. What's the most important goal you want to accomplish within your first three months of taking office if you get elected to another term? And then to accomplish that goal, what would be the costs or any savings from it? And what do you need to make that goal?
How much time do I have?
Two minutes.
Goals for the start of 2020. I guess three main ones. Number one, we have basically the second and third floors of the Crawford County Courthouse vacant right now. We need to get those floors filled. Our idea was to, and still is, to move offices that are currently outside of the courthouse into the courthouse to occupy those spaces. That is still our plan. We're devising the floor plans for that. That is going to be a partnership with the judicial branch of Crawford County Government, and we're looking at moving court offices in there, but it has to be what will work for them and work for the citizens. So that's number one. Number two, keep the care center moving forward. You know, that's something I think is critical for our county, and it's an important aspect of our county government. So we're moving in that direction. As you're aware, we have a company who's managing for us, and they're doing well, but there's more improvements we still want to make. So that's my second one. And third, we're soon to be opening a personal care boarding home. The Quality Living Center is no longer in operation to take care of some of the more vulnerable members of our community, so we're working toward opening that personal care boarding home. As for the costs involved, I think we can save money by occupying the second and third floors of the courthouse. I think we can save you money to do that. Personal care boarding home, there are state funds available that are being employed to make that move, and the care center, it's frankly all about census. If we can increase our census there, then it will be an operation that will continue to serve the county very well.
Thank you. Mr. Hunter?
The most important thing after getting in is to start interconnecting all the agencies that we have, getting to learn who they're, the people that they are affecting with the services that they offer, how fast, or we can maybe streamline that. It's very important to me to understand that every municipality should be able to be heard, and if that would take moving around to each work session and then meeting on the side, whether it's before five o'clock or well after that, in order to understand what our municipality's problems are, or their issues that they seem to talk about. I'd like to do that. I'd like to also move right into the mental health, our section there, to understand what people are suffering from, or a lot of people are. To me, Crawford County mental health is dealing with a lot of our citizens, and we have to find out how healthy, unhealthy, where they're going, when we just don't know what to do with them. And then I want to understand everything that happens between the judicial center and the courthouse, the properties we do have, which I mean land, and of course, the buildings. So I think we need to understand fully what our property has, how that kind of comes to where the comprehensive plans have been written, hold community-style meetings after five so we can all talk about that, and as many times as we can in order to drum up the information from the people that live in those particular municipalities, not just Meadville, or everywhere around this county. That's the most important thing, is to start interconnecting with people.
Thank you. Mr. Weiderspan, would you like me to repeat the question?
Yes, please.
Okay. What's the most important goal you want to accomplish within your first three months of taking office if you're elected to another term? And to accomplish that goal, what would the costs or the cost savings be, and what do you, what do you need to make that goal or reach that goal?
First thing I'd want to do, obviously, there's going to be at least one new Commissioner come January, depending on the choices that the voters make in November, and if I'm fortunate enough to be one of those three, the first thing I would want to do is meet with the other two people that were elected as Commissioner, and review what has gone on in my eight years there, and get their ideas for what they see the county doing going forward, and see if we can't work together to get those things accomplished. But as Commissioner Sauf said, the current courthouse, we've got nearly two floors that are empty, and we've been working through ideas to bring some offices back in there that we're now renting space for, which would certainly reduce costs. And we're going to have a new president judge come the first of the year, and we need to work with him. As has been mentioned, the judicial branch of county government is certainly very important, and we need to work with them for the accomplishments for all the county, and take into consideration their ideas moving forward for offices and locations and so forth. But together, working with the commissioners and with the new president judge, I think we can certainly reduce some costs that we currently have, which was the goal of the judicial center and the courthouse, as was laid out by the Citizens Advisory Committee. And we continue to monitor what's going on at the Crawford County Care Center. We have affinity there doing the management, and we meet with them. We try to meet every month. We've got a meeting coming this Friday with them for another update of where things stand, and continue to work with them. And that's a great facility out there, great care for the residents, and the employees really care, so we need to continue to work to see if we can keep those doors open and keep going.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you very much. Mr. Henry?
I think the first thing in my mind would be to review all the current spending, and actually more for my information than others, because a lot of people don't realize all the stuff that a county actually does. And if you take a look at the budget, which is several hundred pages, I would certainly lean on the other commissioners that were there before and look at each line item to see exactly why we do it, what we're doing with it, and if it's a necessity or not. I think that's important for my own sake. The second part would be simple. I'd like to create a task force for public safety. There's a huge fire and EMS problem in this county that's looming. If it's not fixed in the next couple of years, it certainly could jeopardize some safety when it comes to our citizens. And the last thing would be to sit down with all three commissioners that are elected with each department head and each row office official to maybe work together to find solutions. I found a lot out from just sitting with some of the row officials themselves. They have some good ideas, and I think maybe instead of reinventing the wheel sometimes, utilize their intelligence when it comes to some of the questions that I might have. Other than that, I don't think it would cost anything to do those three things, Keith, so zero would be good for me, so.
All right. Thank you very much. We'll move on with our second question. We'll start with Mr. Hunter. The county's got approximately $6.5 million in unrestricted investment funds. It's money that was left over, collated from different accounts. The amount was higher, was around approximately $11 million a few years ago, but money was set aside for the public safety building, the parking deck, and parking lots that were needed for the judicial center and the courthouse with the change in splitting the two buildings. But there's still about $6.5 million that is not earmarked for anything. What do you think's the best use for that money and why?
Well, we do have several, like the comprehensive plan. We should open that up and look in there for some of the things where if we do have this extra money, is where we could kind of apply that. So it could be anything from how we're using those comprehensive plans, what's in there, our properties, how we could use our properties, what could we do on a minimal basis at the fairgrounds to maybe start looking at marketing slightly? Our housing plan that we just came up with, that's just been released not too long ago, we have to look at that. So all the comprehensive plans, we'd open those up. Those are basically, we've paid for that consultation. We have these plans that are there that could make certain things better, and what are those things we just don't usually have around? Those comprehensive plans are written, and then they're just kind of put away. Sometimes I'm sure they're looked at, but there's, it's pretty much what we need to do. That could take four years quickly, or even up to eight to 10 years to really get things moving. So we should find out how well we can use that money in order to apply it to the properties and the assets we already have to boost that up. So maybe that would, that would kind of move, rather than just sitting there, we'd be able to use it, and that would hopefully bring in the revenue at a very small rate, and see how far we can stretch that money.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Weiderspan?
Well, as we, you mentioned, Keith, the money that used to be 11-something, and some of that has been used for the public safety building and the parking areas, so we didn't have to borrow money to go to that. The two floors in the courthouse that are going to have to have some remodeling done whenever it is finally decided, with working with the new president judge on how to bring some of those court-related offices back in there, that, you know, perhaps some of that money could be used to make the changes that are needed there. And when we do get involved in doing some remodeling at courthouse, there's also going to have, that's going to trigger some changes with ADA requirements in the building. Those monies can be possibly used to fund those projects, and so the county wouldn't have to go out and borrow the money to do all that. Plus, you'd have to reduce costs by not paying rent, as we are for some of those apartments now. So together with those savings, hopefully we can fund some of these changes and use part of that money and still keep some of that investment. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Henry?
When the budget's 70-plus million dollars and you have less than 10% safety net, you leave it alone. And the key to it is, any small business guy will tell you, my accountant would probably beat me up if I didn't agree with him tonight, we talked about this, but without a safety net at less than 10%, you're at risk. If something catastrophic happens to the county, we have to pay out for any major structural issues not covered by insurance or any unforeseen expenses, less than 10% is certainly a little bit scary when it comes to that safety net. So I would certainly leave it alone where it's at.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Sauf?
Leave it right where it is. You know, you're absolutely right about the amount that you want to have in a quote "savings account." It's not really a savings account, but it is in some degree. We get interest income from it. You know, and even with $6.5 million and unrestricted, the county generally has to take out a tax anticipation note at the end of the year, because our bills, it's all about timing. Tax revenue doesn't start really coming into the county until April, May, so we have to take out a tax anticipation note to get the county through those months when the tax bills go out, but nothing has come in yet. And if we don't even have any of the $6.5 million to help with that, then I think it would be really a detriment to the county. So I think it would be bad for the county to dip into that unless it's absolutely necessary when emergency situations come about, and then you find a way to replenish it. But I think we need to leave it where it is.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Our third question, Rick will throw out, and we'll start with Mr. Weiderspan.
Good evening. Thank you all four of you gentlemen for being here tonight. This question, Crawford County gets more than $42,000 from Pennsylvania as a payment in lieu of taxes for land taken for Plymouth Tuning State Park. The city of Meadville gets $75,000 a year from Allegheny College and $85,000 a year from Meadville Medical Center, and municipal contributions from those two institutions. Should the county ask Allegheny College, Meadville Medical Center, and maybe other major nonprofits for some type of contribution?
Well, I think that's something that certainly can be looked at. We have talked about that in the past, the last couple of budget years, that, you know, there are those nonprofits that don't pay anything in taxes, but you also have to look at the services provided. You know, what do we provide for Allegheny College or some of those entities? Yeah, we have, you know, the Public Safety 911 service, but the city's providing the fire and rescue and the police service. So you have to take that into consideration, too. It's certainly a conversation we could have and see if they would be interested in doing something, but I can't feel that you can ask people to pay for something when the county's not giving them much in return. Not that public safety isn't very important, and that's important for dispatch and the fire and the police, but I wouldn't be against having that discussion with them, but it's a little different situation than with, like, Allegheny to the city, in my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Henry?
That's a great question, and like Francis said, I would have no problem having that discussion. However, I'd really rather do that after looking at spending to see if there's some ways we can save money ourselves. I always feel like government never looks at the fact that maybe we can save money by cutting expenses first, before we try and generate revenue. Anytime it feels like we generate revenue, we have to find a purpose for it, and I do agree that the pilot is nice for those entities, and I have heard Francis talk about this before, and I think it's a good idea that, to keep it in the back of your mind, it would be a good discussion point with them for both, for both entities for that matter. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Sauf?
When I was mayor of the city of Meadville, I was directly involved in renegotiating these agreements with Allegheny College and Meadville Medical Center. And there absolutely is a direct correlation between services that the city provides to these entities. Fire protection, fire response, police protection, police response. It's a little different from the county side. You know, as Francis mentioned, yes, we provide 911 services to then dispatch those other entities, but 911 doesn't necessarily dispatch. So the county's direct involvement with those entities is far, far less than what the city of Meadville's is. And we have to look at the state law. They don't have to pay anything. I mean, they're a tax-exempt entity, just like a church and schools and city government, county government. So they're not required to do anything. So the fact that they've placed enough value in the services that the city of Meadville was providing to them, that they did make those voluntary donations, I think is great. I had set up a subcommittee to talk to all the nonprofits, and some participated and others didn't. But looking at, especially in the emergency services arena, what the county provides, I'm welcome to have those discussions with those two entities, as well as any other tax-exempt entity, but I just don't know that the county has as much, I'll say, to bargain with, frankly.
Thank you. Mr. Hunter?
I doubt, I don't think we should ask them for any money. Maybe rather get into conversations about what could we, other assets. So maybe we could have the science division talk with somebody that might have a bachelor's degree that works at the county in science. Maybe we could get them certified, and they could test soils, and we could have some type of a permitting and grow that way as far as the county. And then we would be able to have certified people at our county level through them if we'd asked them to help us. They are an asset, but I don't know if we need to ask them for money at this point. I think it would be met with resistance, and actually it'd be better if we could kind of work right along with them. The hospital, it would be great to have bigger conversations about substance abuse disorders and how that we as a county and mental health might maybe even turn into something like a problem resolution court. They could help guide us through that. A number of counties do this, and on a federal level, and we could save $3,000 to $13,000 per participant or person that's going to be just incarcerated over and over again. I think they would help us guide through that, understanding of how we could really help probably as many people as we can without having to charge them for something. I think their, their knowledge of these things, I think they would be able to share. My experience with the Market Authority, they came in and they were able to do some surveys and talk about the market house, what they could do inside of the market house, how it could actually grow at a limited financial rate, so it turns something around. So I think the college and the hospital would be great as just a bigger conversation. They could be included in a lot more than what we have them already. Thank you.
Thank you. This next question will go to Mr. Henry.
To balance the 2019 budget, the commissioners had to raise county property taxes, 2.75 mils with two mils of tax for the county's general operating expenses. The increase was even after $800,000 was cut from the budget. If elected, how would you balance the needs of the county and its citizens versus the cost?
That's a great question, and probably a million-dollar question that people like to answer sometimes. I honestly think it, again, it goes back to my first point about checking all the spending first. I do think there are a lot of employees in Crawford County that are nearing retirement age that have actually talked to me about maybe an early retirement program, through some attrition. I think that's a good way to maybe make our level of employees down a little bit, and I think that would be a good start. But really, the line-by-line check of expenses is a good way to go, and I do appreciate Chris doing that in the primary, before the primary, we talked about that in the budget for last year, but it really comes down to control, controlling what you do, controlling spending, finding some avenues to maybe share services amongst each other's department. For instance, the snowplow at the care center is new, but I know the one at the prison isn't. And maybe be able to utilize each other's resources together. I think that's probably a good start, is to use a little bit of resources together instead of trying to buy individually, as each department would do. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Sauf?
I think part of what we need to look at is the reason for the increase. As you recall, the county went eight years without increasing property taxes, and included in the general fund expenses were $900,000 a year just to pay for debt service and repayment of the financing for the judicial center, but it wasn't included in the budget. We increased funding as part of that 2.75 for the library system. The library system hadn't seen an increase in over 26 years. The remaining two mils covered expenses that, again, over eight years have accumulated, additional expenses of operating two brand-new buildings, stormwater management that frankly the prior architects didn't account for in the design of the judicial center. Believe it or not, computer software, we all have computers at homes and phones at homes, and those software systems are planned obsolescence. We've had to spend hundreds of thousands of dollars. planned obsolescence. We've had to spend hundreds of thousands of dollars just to upgrade operating systems because Microsoft has deemed them not supported anymore. We just had a budget meeting today with our IT folks, and there's another one coming that's going to cost us a lot of money. We've talked before about the state and federal mandates with no associated funding. All of these things cost the county money. Lawsuit filed against the Commonwealth, which gave rise to us having to get one-point-seven million dollars of new voting machines. These things cost money, and the list goes on and on. And the discussion was, had the county raised your taxes just gradually over the past eight years, was interesting, you would have ended up paying more than what you ended up paying. As unfortunate it was that we had to raise taxes, you would have paid more than the one-time increase that we unfortunately had to do for 2019.
Thank you. Mr. Hunter?
Can you do the question again, please? Sure. To balance the 2019 budget, commissioners had to raise county property taxes, two-point-seven-five mils for the county's general operating expenses. The increase happened after about eight-hundred thousand dollars was cut from the budget. If elected, how would you balance the needs of the county and its citizens versus the cost?
We'd have to start the conversation with the citizens to find out what's happening. I still think in mental health, in our housing, is very important. We have to look a little bit more long-term. We have to kind of put the brakes on now, have to see where, what the departments are actually in need of, what are all those needs adding up to, where some of this could be cut. I like the early retirement idea, because I'm sure that would work out well. And then we could kind of see where everybody is within the courthouse, and maybe find folks that are certified, or, excuse me, if their, what their degree is, what they went to school for. We start using the town inside to ask these questions. As far as like, we have to think about adding to our, the people, we got to keep them employed, and how do we do that? Those are a lot of different things we have to worry about. We have to start talking, hit the brakes on where we're spending, understand why we spent so much on one thing where we've cut so much on another thing that would be beneficial to more people. And that's where the, that's what it is. What are we affecting? Is it a slim margin of people or a larger margin of people? Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Weatherspan?
As has been said, we've been going over the budget now for close to a month with the various departments. And we need to hold the line on the spending. We've been telling every department that we're not raising taxes this year. And a good number of departments have come in with their budget at the same as what it's been last year, or some have even come in a little less with their expenses, and that's certainly appreciated. But of course, there's been a couple of departments that have come in higher. And we told them all along that, you know, we're going to have to make cuts. And if yours is going to increase, then where are we going to find the money to cut from somewhere else? But our commitment is not to raise taxes for 2020, and to keep the line on the spending. And I think we can do that with everybody working together. And we just need to control the spending, some things like the cost of insurance and so things, other things like that that go up, wages for employees that's in the union contracts that automatically raise, those things, we have to adjust for those. But to watch the line on the spending and until, you know, we can make that balance, that has to be done, and cuts are going to have to be made. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next question, Mr. Sauf. We'll start with you. Staying on the financial end, how will you, as a commissioner, bring fiscal responsibility to the office if you're elected?
I guess my initial thought is, that's what I've been doing for the past four years. I feel that's what I've done in my time as a school director at the city of Meadville and my term as a county commissioner. We, you know, someone asked the question, what would I cut now in the budget that I didn't cut before? And I, my answer was, geez, if I was going to cut it now, I would have cut it then. You talk to the department heads, you talk to the other elected officials, and they have very clear understanding of what they feel their departments and their offices need in order to provide you, the citizens of this county, the services that you've come to demand. So, you know, in collaboration with them, we understand that they're being just as fiscally responsible as we are, that we're not individually benefiting by any means in the county budget. Everything that is spent, we feel is needed and wanted by the citizens of the county. And where it's not, then those expenses, we would not approve. So I think we've continued to exhibit fiscal responsibility, even though on the surface you may not feel that way based on the fact that we had to raise taxes.
All right, thank you. Mr. Hunter?
I think with each and every department, we have to balance out, and if we can get folks in to talk about who are taxpayers and live in the county. If we can get these things, we talk about them, have them sort of, they'll understand better. We could revisit that several times and understand why we're spending money out of each department for each single item that we may or may not need. Because sometimes it seems like there's things that probably we didn't need, or it could have been a used vehicle, it could have been a little less electricity somewhere. We should take a look at our buildings, what they're using that way. So we can start at that point. And then as far as like getting folks together, I think that's the most important thing, to keep holding hearings more often than once a month, to get through this and understand where the stable ground is, that we can kind of shoot from there. I think everything has to be questioned when it comes down to each purchase, when it comes to the meetings. We'll have to just look at each and every one, research what it'll do, what purchase will, what that will do for us, and how many is it going to affect.
All right, thank you. Mr. Weatherspan?
Well, as Christopher mentioned, I feel that I've been a commissioner for eight years, and seven of those eight years, we didn't raise the taxes. And, you know, I think that shows the commitment of not only myself, but the commissioners that were part of those, both those boards that I've been a part of, to be very responsible. And I believe from the last year, when we did have to raise taxes, and working with the various departments and the elected officials, I think they've understood that the commissioners are the ones that are responsible for the budget, but it's also partly their responsibility, too, for the cost of running their various departments and offices. So, working together with those, I think we can continue to be fiscally responsible, and as I said, a commitment not to raise taxes in 2020, and working together to keep costs down and get a balanced budget. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Henry?
I think this is a good question as well. I really think it comes down to applying the same principles that everybody in this room has to do in their own personal life, and that's living within your means. If it's not a mandate, do we have to do it? What's it going to cost? If it is a mandate, what's the true cost? Is it just the judicial center? Is it the debt service? Is it the parking lot? Is it the parking garage? That number should always be in the forefront of anybody's idea, no matter what the idea is. These guys had some mandate for the parking issue became difficult, and listening to some of the rhetoric, went back and forth with it, it was interesting, but it's still, it was still a mandate, and it still was required by the city for parking. A lot of people complained about that. But it's really important to keep an eye on the budget, not just once a year, but weekly, just to look at where everybody's at, where their spending's at, see if some unforeseen circumstances created another burden to the county, and just really keep an eye on it really closely. But just trying to live with your means is honestly the best thing I think we can do. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Hunter, we'll start this next question with you. This year, the county had to pay out fifty thousand dollars to a now former county employee to settle a federal age discrimination case. County also this summer reached an out-of-court settlement for an undisclosed amount as yet in another federal case against the county after a county jail inmate was beaten by a guard and had to have surgery. What will you do as a commissioner to avoid these situations that ultimately cost the county and taxpayers needless expense?
I think we have to participate in these, each department, and understand, why was this guy let go? Why, what are the conditions at the jail to put that supervisor in a position to kind of lose it? And that felt bad for everybody. What are the conditions like there? I think just showing up all the time to each department will allow that relationship to build, and you'll start to hear about what's happening and some of the problems that each individual department is having. That'll take a lot, and I think that's one way of doing it, is starting those conversations. Not, you don't have to be friends, I'm just saying, you have to be totally concerned about everybody that is under your employment. And inmates, it's like one thing as far as your responsibility and who you're putting there to run the place. Are these guards receiving the proper amount of, like, obviously there's trauma that's going on in there every day, and each person that's lived in there and who is supervising these folks. Are we helping these guys cope the best way through this? What are their daily challenges in each department, and how the leadership in that department and the workers underneath of that, how is that all to resolve some of this, where it's a little too negative, it's against each other? So it would definitely be a lot of time spent learning these folks, learning what happens between everybody that works inside of that department. And then we'll have a clear picture of what the needs are, and maybe some of the problems that build up, and then create these issues.
All right, thank you. Mr. Weatherspan?
Well, I think we need to continue to look at these areas and what was the underlying cause that led to these lawsuits, and do more of an investigation in what maybe could have been done a little different in handling these situations, and what we can do to make sure that they don't happen again in the future. It's unfortunate those things have happened, but it doesn't mean we can't learn from them and make improvements going forward to reduce the chance of these things happening again. So, you know, we have, I think, learned some things from these two situations, and hopefully we can put some things in practice that would help avoid these kind of situations in the future. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Henry?
So I'm going to separate the question into two keys. So the age discrimination issue first. I've hired and fired people since 2004, and it's not something that anybody wants to do. I've, we've had people switch positions in their jobs, elevate themselves through seniority, you know, from promotion. The biggest thing I've always learned from any of my HR friends and our own business HR attorney we have is a paper trail. If you have a paper trail and you show that there is an issue with someone and you're demoting them for a purpose or a reason, then that paper trail would justify the reason for that. If you don't have a paper trail, you're going to open yourself up for a lot of issues, including a lawsuit. As far as the jail issue goes, I've read some of it, only from maybe what would be in the Tribune itself. There, I think there was discussion about PTSD and mental health with the guards, and I hope that, and I don't even know, so I'll make sure we do, check the policies to ensure that the guards have the ability to have PTSD training and actual mental health, the assistance from there. I really think each department could sit down and review all of their policies and update anything that you would need. Definitely consult an attorney while you're doing that. It's worth the money upfront prior to paying that out at the end. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Sauf?
I'm going to be a little more evasive. And I say that because nothing that I say do I want to compromise the county, nor the individuals who are involved in either of those cases that you cited. And I want to be very careful about that because we're dealing with personnel issues. And it's just important to me that we handle them in a respectful way, again, for all those involved. And I'll tell you, you can do everything by your policy. You can have policies all you want. You can do everything by the book. But that doesn't guarantee that someone is not going to take the initiative for whatever reason and sue the county for something if they feel they have been wronged. So we just have to deal with them as they come up. You know, some of them may involve training and understanding responsibility and the environment in which you work. But at the end of the day, again, there's some personal responsibility that all of us have in every one of our positions. And you can't legislate that. There's no policy that will guarantee that these types of things unfortunately won't ever happen. So, again, I don't mean to not answer the question, but I'm very careful because we are dealing with people here. And it's important to me that we maintain that respect.
Thank you. All right. I get the next question. This one goes to Mr. Weatherspan.
In your view, what's the role of a county commissioner in economic development?
Well, in my opinion, as a commissioner, we don't create jobs. That's not, a commissioner's a responsibility. What we do through our various contacts or boards that we're on can encourage in economic development. Commissioner Sauf sits on the board for EPAC, Crawford County's Development Agency. I sit on the board for the Northwest Commission, the Regional Development Agency that serves nine counties in Northwest PA. And then just being good ambassadors for our area when we're out talking with people that, you know, Crawford County's a good place to come and live, and there's opportunities here for employment. We hear all the time, you know, businesses having jobs available. So, and it's certainly a great place to live. Cost of living's pretty reasonable compared to a lot of other areas. So, to be good ambassadors for our own county and work with those agencies, that's their expertise that they do with every day, helping to develop and bring in business in Crawford County, and being on those boards and finding out the information, and maybe can share some things that we hear interest in the area of businesses or whatever, so they can follow up with that and hopefully get a business to come here, like EPAC just recently did out Keystone, bringing the plastics in here. So, those are the kind of things that I think a commissioner can do to help with economic development. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Henry?
I think Francis is correct. It's not the county's job to create jobs. What it is the county's job, I think, to create an environment that a business would want to come here and start shop. Now, that doesn't just include property tax. That also obviously includes the workforce. There was a question back in the spring about this, and it's actually a very good answer from Mr. Sauf, in regards to people and who can actually work in a workforce. We have to make sure that there's people actually available for companies to work. So that would include mental health assistance and drug and alcohol. Keep working on the opiates, keep working on getting people back to work and more available because he actually said it best, the people who come here for a new business want to make sure they have a workforce. And I'm not so sure that we can provide that for them right now. So I think that's a good way to keep the environment started for a pro-business area. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Sauf?
I don't think I have anything else to say. Francis and Eric just answered the question for me. So, I would add, I agree with both of them. And I would add that, you know, if the county's role is to understand that if we have ordinances in our county, just like any township supervisor or borough manager knows, if there are ordinances on the books that are prohibiting businesses from coming into our areas, we need to know what those are so that we can address them and try to change them. But we didn't sit around a table, and government doesn't sit around a table and figure out, geez, how can I create something that's going to be harmful to a businessperson? They're all born out of somebody doing something that was not in the public good. So we create these laws, and we paint everybody with a broad brush. So if we know what they are, then we can address them. One of the main things the county also can do is get out of the way, if that's our role. If, you know, if the economic development agencies, their strength is in bringing business development into our county. So support them in any way we can, but also realize that they're the professionals in that aspect of our county. So let them do what they need to do to, because in the long run, it helps us all.
Thank you. Mr. Hunter?
We have to take a look at our housing plan. That's like one of our most, the biggest economic driver. We've just done a real big comprehensive plan as an amendment, and we need to take a look at that. The business, if a business is thinking about moving here, and if we see bad housing, it might not be the greatest thing. It's something we could build off of. I need a commissioner to push that idea. We have to find where we can get these people, make it a little more, like, so if we keep these properties on a tax roll, that's what that plan is in there for, and we're just not following through with it. These plans are there, the comprehensive plan, but then the housing. I think we're missing out on agriculture as well. I think we're missing out on agriculture as well. That's something that we could probably grow here, since it is already a large one, but we've kind of taken the emphasis off of that, I think, over the past few years. And if we, if we're ignoring that, we need to make full well-known that we're paying attention to that, how that we use our land, through the best use of our land, maybe manufacturing facilities could come in and make money. That's all written in the comprehensive plan that we just aren't looking at. I've read it's pretty nice, too. We could look at, how do we incorporate that, get our fairgrounds a little bit more hustle and bustle? We've lost, I think we need to add more focus to our 4H program. I think they've recently been reduced with their budgets, and that only hurts in the long term, and we'll feel that. Maybe it's time to investigate hemp production for manufacturing something out of that hemp, which could be a board, it could be insulation. That's what we need to do, and we certainly have the property for it, and could we even lease that? So, this may not be the right solution, but we could spend time and not money on that. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Next question will go to Mr. Henry. For more than 30 years, Crawford County hasn't done a reassessment of property values. The last full reassessment in the county was done in 1969. In 1985, the county did reassessment by adding a multiplier to the information that it obtained in 1969. Do you support countywide reassessment, and why or why not?
So, I absolutely support looking at it, but one of the reasons that I may or may not like it, I'll start from the beginning, but I'll use Tioga County in 2008, they reassessed their county, and the number of lawsuits that came from the reassessment, it got to the point where the commissioners voted to just throw it out and go back to the way it was before. One-third of those folks were happy, one-third were not happy, and one-third stayed the same. The net end result of reassessment is about 10% more in revenue, and you scramble up the millages, and in the end, that's where your net is. What I'm concerned about, and why it would cause me pause, is it sounds like roughly it would be about $4 million to do the reassessment, and I think you quoted the $6 million that we have in savings. It would make it pretty tight to do, but I would certainly look into a little bit more and try and look at some of the value of it instead of just the negatives. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Sauf?
So, yes, am I in favor of a countywide reassessment? Yes. Am I in favor of paying for it? Well, no. Nobody wants to. But, you know, Crawford County is the second oldest in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania to have a full countywide reassessment. The study from the Center for Rural Pennsylvania in 2010 brought up some interesting characteristics. They said that counties that do a systematic countywide reassessment every five years have higher median home value, ultimately leads to higher county tax revenue, an increase in economic development, a slight increase in personal income, and an increase in employment. And the longer you go without having a countywide reassessment, then those benefits become fewer and fewer. So, yes, I'm a proponent of it. We all talk about fairness, right? Everybody wants everything to be fair. Until we have a countywide reassessment, I don't think it will be fair necessarily, and it may only be fair for that one time, because values will change the day after we do a reassessment. But again, I'm all for looking into it. How we pay for it, that will be a challenge, but a challenge that's worth looking into.
Thank you. Mr. Hunter?
Maybe not instead of, or like, instead of the whole thing, maybe we could look at, break it down into individual, even from a transfer of, let's say, a $750,000 home to the next owner, maybe that's where we could look into something that would be more of a fair share payment for them one time as that happens through it. We look at some of the properties that might be condemned, but we have a, instead of just putting the papers on the house, we could actually go out there, that would be a small investment to get people to do this, but the council folks. If we were able to see that, they might, half of them might pay what is not paid. If we could do some math, we could probably end up having that house condemned, because it's just not doing anything, and then somebody else with the prospect of them buying it and then rebuilding on that property, and then our tax rate would go up. It would take a couple of years to do that. We'd have to look at it, because there's a number of different opinions that I've heard about the whole assessment, and a lot of people that would get what they would think as being screwed, maybe not be so bad, but where there's value that's there, we should look at some of those properties and how that, when there's a transfer, I feel that could be done myself.
Thank you. Mr. Weatherspan?
Well, certainly, the idea of reassessment is certainly to make things fair for everybody, but it really comes down for me is the cost of doing that. We've heard anything from $4 million and maybe as much as $6 million because of how long it's been since the last reassessment. And I know some people approach me about it, and they think it's going to generate more income for the county. As Eric pointed out, it's got to be revenue neutral. You can't do a reassessment and then use that to generate a higher income on your tax base. As has been said, and I've talked to people down in C cap that do this professionally, it does pretty much work out, a third of the people, their taxes are going to go down, about a third's going to stay the same, and about a third's going to go up. I think the best way for me to prepare for a reassessment, we have to do that years in advance, as the finances the county can afford, put some money aside each year to help pay for that reassessment. Just as we started to do with the voting machines, we had about a couple, I think it was a couple hundred thousand dollars put aside, but then, of course, that was mandated, we had to do that sooner, so we didn't have enough to cover the whole cost, but we're working, trying to get the state to help come up with at least part of that funding. I think the best way to prepare for the reassessment would be the same way, to set some money aside ahead of time, until we at least have a good portion of the cost of reassessment built up in funds, so that we can do that, because I don't know where we're going to come up with $4 to $6 million to do a total reassessment, which is the only fair way and the only way you can do it. You can't do spot reassessment. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That's going to conclude our questioning portion of tonight's forum. We're going to give each of the candidates a couple of minutes to make a closing statement. We're going to go in reverse order, so we'll start with Mr. Henry. And, Mr. Henry, you're up.
Thank you, everyone, for listening. This entire process has been quite the experience. I feel like the Crawford County Commissioners Race has been fun. I've actually gained a lot of friendships from everybody here, and even the folks in the primary. That's the way I like to have those elections, people could learn from those. I really think that what I bring to the table is just a small business mind to apply some business principles. I said in the spring that you can't run county like a business, but you can apply principles to it. $12 million of our budget goes to the Crawford County Care Center. It's paid by payer mix and the third-party insurance reimbursement. That's what the ambulance service is paid, that's how it's paid. So, it brings me a little bit extra knowledge that I can help to ensure that affinity and the people there are actually driving it forward. And I think that's really important for the next couple of months, to look at the care center, to see how it works, and where we go from there. But I thank you for your time, and I appreciate your vote on November 5th. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Weatherspan, you're up.
I wish to thank Keith Gushard and Rick Green and the Meadville Tribune for hosting tonight's forum, and thank you to Armstrong and Cool 101.7 for their coverage. And thank you to everyone that was able to take the time from your busy schedules to listen to the four of us, to hear our ideas and views to the questions asked of us tonight. As you think over our answers and thoughts for Crawford County for the next four years in preparation to cast your vote, my app offer a couple of thoughts of how I am different from the other candidates. I have nearly eight years' experience serving as your commissioner. I'm the only one that has completed the Academy of Excellence program and training that is offered by the County Commissioners Association of Pennsylvania. This program gives commissioners the tools and training to perform the duties and responsibilities of a county commissioner. During these eight years, I have developed a good line of communication with our elected representatives in Harrisburg and in Congress on both sides of the aisle. This has been helpful in sharing how various issues that elected officials are considering would affect us here in Crawford County. This has also been helpful when there have been the need to go to them for their assistance with issues that we have had to face, such as Woodcock Lake Park and the Army Corps of Engineers, M A T P funding, and the mandatory replacement of our voting equipment and funding for it. There are just a few of the more recent issues that we have discussed with them seeking their assistance. In closing, I thank you for electing me to serve you as a county commissioner the past eight years. My office door is always open, my email and phones are available to any of you to ask questions or share your thoughts concerning you and our county. When you go to the polls on November, I humbly ask you to consider me for one of your two votes for county commissioner. I'm Francis Weatherspan Jr., Republican candidate for commissioner. And when you cast your vote, you don't have to know how to spell or pronounce it, just look for the longest name. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Mr. Hunter?
I want to thank everybody for coming here tonight. It's a beautiful thing. I want to thank everybody who has supported me so far through this kind of unusual campaign. I decided to set out to do things a little differently, and have learned so many lessons from the mistakes I've made in the towns that I've visited. People reach out to me every day, asking for support, advice, connections, and I do a pretty good job helping them with what I have, and that's being resourceful and thinking creatively. I see being commissioner as a natural next step in my role as a community advocate and change maker. With the resources and support of the county behind me, I can offer the same sensible and imaginative solutions, and these solutions that come from the people affected by the decisions made in our county. We all have a voice. Some people are learning how to use it, some people aren't going to share their voice loudly, but we can all listen to folks at every opportunity. That means every day, all year long, not just during election season. We need more people in government who don't hide from their mistakes, who roll up their sleeves every day to do the work. We need wonderful change makers who know what it's like to be at the bottom, and know what it's like to have their thoughts and hopes of a better life ignored. I will give you the time and respect you deserve because it's who I am and who I promise to be as a Crawford County Commissioner. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Mr. Sauf?
Thank you, Keith. Again, thanks to the media partners for sponsoring and for broadcasting tonight's forum. Special thanks to all you folks for being here this evening, and of course, those listening at home. I've been honored to be one of your commissioners for the past four years, serving with Francis and our fellow colleague, John Amato. The promise that I will make to you now is the same one, and frankly, the only one that I've ever made, and that is that I will continue to look at every issue that's brought before this office and do what I think is in the best interest of the entire county, whether you live in Spartansburg, Jamestown, Beaver Center, Titusville, or any point in between. You've put your faith and trust in me, and I hope that I've earned your respect. Abraham Lincoln is credited to have said, quote, "I like to see a man proud of the place in which he lives. I like to see a man live so that his place will be proud of him." For me, that place is Crawford County, and I'd be honored to continue to represent you. Thank you.
Well, thank you, gentlemen, very much for appearing tonight. Now, tonight's forum is going to be repeated on Armstrong Cable, Channel 23 and Channel 100 on Friday at about 2:30 in the afternoon, also Saturday at 3:30 in the afternoon. That's going to be the first of several repeats of tonight's event. It will be up on Armstrong's YouTube channel. The Tribune will have a link to that channel with our story and on our website once it's posted. We do remind you that this is the first of two forums for the county commissioner candidates. On Wednesday, the 23rd of October, will be in Titusville. That one will be shown on Armstrong. It will be on a delayed basis, so we're not going to be going live on their cable system. We're trying to get it worked out, so we can go live on Facebook, though, as well. Once again, we'd like to thank the candidates, Chris Sauf, Dan Hunter, Francis Weatherspan, and Eric Henry for appearing here tonight. We remind you to get out and vote for the candidates of your choice in the upcoming election in November. And on behalf of Rick Green and the Meadville Tribune, I'm Keith Gushard. Have a good evening.[1780.61][1780.61]